The Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union Board will come to order. I'm going to ask the members, once again, because we do have a home audience, if we could go around the table and make introductions. I'm Dave Clark, representing Westminster on the Union High School Board and chairing this meeting.
I'm Ray Carey, the Assistant Superintendent of Supervisors for the Rockingham Supervisory Union.
Chris Pratt, Superintendent.
Rick Holloway, Rocky Ham School Board.
Lynn Morgan, Athens Grafton.
Charles Chase, Athens Grafton.
Josh Aberman, I'm the note taker.
Jessa West Clark from Grafton.
Rick Gordon from Westminster.
Priscilla Lambert, representing Rockingham.
Brenda Farkas, representing Rocky Ham.
Chad Pryor, I'm the super sub for our Wyndham Northeast Elementary School District. And that's the capacity in which I'm sitting here.
Deborah Wright, is that representing Rockingham?
Edie Lou Cole, I'm the Business Manager.
I'm Steve Fine from the Bellows Falls High School. And I'm just here to stay out of the rains.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda Superintendent Clark?
And I have, we have the policies tonight, so we don't have to keep that on the agenda.
Okay, we're gonna scratch policy. Do we have any communication and/or public comment tonight? I do not hear any. Review and approve Board minutes of October 23rd. We have a motion on those minutes, please. Charles, why don't you start us off with a motion on the minutes, would you?
I make a motion, we accept them as presented.
Okay, we have a motion on the minutes. Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, and thank you for the second Jessa. All right, are there any corrections to the minutes? Deb?
I guess I'm confused. I wasn't here for that meeting, which I had been. But on page two of the minutes, the student meal section, it says 60 percent is free at the first, I'm student meals, A. 60 percent is free, 15 percent is reduced, 72 percent of students receive fees and a cost. Reduced is not free.
It is free.
What is it?
Free and reduced.
It's reimbursed?
Yeah.
All right, and there was one other thing I didn't understand. That makes sense. And I'm disappointed that it's only 58 percent of the students participating. But under C, the back end is up to date, the budget was over, the revenue is $18,000, $18,000 higher than anticipated, what was the total?
For last year?
Yep.
We don't have a final.
So how can we say our net gain is $2,014.49 if indeed we spent over budget, $34,865? I just don't understand the math. I'm confused about the math.
I don't think I gave the split that I anticipated.
Go ahead Lynn.
My understanding is the revenue that was gained, the $8,550, $8,555,000 was $18,000 higher than was expected. So when they went into the year, they anticipated an amount of $8,845,000, something, 40,000? And what they ended up with was $18,000 more than they anticipated?
Yes. And food service.
Yes.
Does he see that? Yes. So then, over the $855,000, is that what you're trying to say?
No, no. They went into the year expecting to have an amount that is $18,000 less than what they earned.
Okay, but we still were over budget, $34,000. You're saying that it was $2,014.49 higher than, what, the over budget amount? So you're trying to say, this paragraph here doesn't make any sense.
The revenue that they got, the money that they received was $18,000 higher than they expected.
Yeah, the budget numbers may not be right.
So the net gain of the, when everything shakes out, was $2,000. But when they went in, as you do with food service, you kind of expect the first year or two to be in the red. And they expected a higher red ratio than what they got. They put $10,000 over what they expected.
I guess I'll have to go back and look at the actual, if the handout was, I don't know, the handout isn't online, I'm assuming that it was just handed out at the meeting.
No.
But if we go back and look at it, although I'd say as a taxpayer, I'm disappointed in having to pay more money than the budget is. Okay, all right, that was my question, the paragraph seems to make sense.
Jack?
Yeah, I just, just that when you show $34,000 more in expenses and $18,000 greater revenue, the net doesn't look like $2,014.
Correct.
That was confusing me. But I didn't have, I wasn't here, didn't have access to the paperwork. I hope that it makes sense if one looks at it.
Yeah, I will check my numbers on that. I don't have one, I mean.
Are there other corrections? All right, the minutes correctly state that there was no action taken as a result of executive session. However, this chairperson did, at the outset of that executive session, state that he believed there would be action likely to follow. It was my error not bringing the camera back in to record in real time the fact that no action was taken as a result of that executive session. That's my mistake, and I want to make sure that anyone who follows this on Fact TV is aware of the fact that there was no action taken as a result of that executive session. Any other corrections? All right, all in favor of accepting the minutes as corrected, you say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'll accuse myself, because I wasn't here.
And I have one abstention, which is, Deb, Josh?
Two.
Two?
I wasn't here either.
Okay, we have two abstentions. All right, I would like to go into executive session for the purpose of a discussion of SU personnel, inviting administration and all board members to attend. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Deb has a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And that was, Priscilla, thank you. All right, can I have a vote, please? All those in favor of the new executive session, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, now, under reports, if there is no objection, however, we are going to deal with 8C, which is update on bus repairs. All right, hearing done, Stanley, why don't you bring us up to date, please?
Well, I just wanted to run it by you guys. Bus number eight is not going to pass inspection. It's got the metal frames in the back that go across. There's three or four of them that are pretty rusted and cracked, and they're going to have to be replaced. And it needs exhaust work, some bodywork, and some turn-in work, too. It's a 2011 bus, but you're talking seven or eight thousand dollars to get it fixed down. And, you know, we gotta do something with these small buses, but I don't want to keep putting a lot of money into them. So it's something you're going to have to think about, and I'll have to come back probably next month and figure out. But you're going to have a, you're supposed to begin the Transportation Committee, so maybe if they get that committee, we can sit down before the next board meeting and discuss what's going on.
That's not the bus that was smoking yesterday, is it?
No. That was a different bus.
Different bus.
Is that, it's one of the small buses?
Yeah, it's a little 18-passenger wheelchair bus.
And how much did you say it was to get it fixed?
It's going to be seven or eight thousand anyways. It's about 1200 to 1500 for each one of them metal frames, because they're, on this little bus, they're all welded in. So they gotta undo the weld, and they're like 10 or 12-inch beams, because they, they put them over the dual wheels in the back to make a flat floor in the back. So they have to raise them up over the top of the wheels. But it's, I mean, we've got two or three other buses, I don't know, when the budget process starts, we're really going to have to start thinking on them buses, or we're going to have to put a lot of money in them. They're all nines and tens, so they're 10, 10, 11 years old already. So instead of just buying one bus at a time, we may have to buy two or three. And then after that, I think we should be pretty sad, because then most of the buses are all dirt beams and newer. So we could have a couple of years in between there.
Anything beyond that, we gotta find a way to get drivers before buses, because if we don't have drivers, what sense of getting new buses?
Stan, I've got a couple of questions here. Jessa?
Just, if you're coming for the next meeting, can you bring a list of all the buses and what you think their condition is? Like if they have another year or two years?
Just ask my question.
Just a list of all your buses, and how long you think before we have to replace them, something like that, or what you think it's going to cost to get it inspected next time, so we can figure out how many, if there's going to be two that aren't going to pass next year, we'll have to, we should deal with them now.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that bus that was smoking yesterday is all fixed and back online and going. They had an old camera system in that bus, and we pulled it out, but we couldn't get all the wires out, because the way they run them all through the entrance, and one of them shorted out somehow or something, that's what it was, with the old camera wire that was smoking on. So that bus is all, it's all fixed and ready to go again.
Jack?
I remember a discussion earlier, beginning of school year, about, I remember if it was just route management or fleet management software, and I'm wondering how we're going with that, because one of the things that we would look to, from at least some of those packages, is being able to sort of predict when we should get a replacement schedule that is not constantly surprised.
We have all the students loaded in, and now we're working on loading the current routes, pinpointing them on the map, so we can see, we don't have to load all in, but we have to get enough pin drops on the routes, so we can see how we can maximize route schedule.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I was asking is whether or not this package also included fleet management components, because some of them do.
No.
Oh, well.
That was going to be a difference between $100 a month, like $10,000 a year, or $25,000. So I kind of went with, let's get the routes out of first.
Well, a lot of them, like, for all mountain use, like every seven or eight years, they turn the buses over. So they're buying seven or eight buses at a time, so that...
That's actually not something that's gone down without a lot of controversy. I would just say that what we really need for our planning is to have something where we can have at least a semi-predictable cost year to year, rather than get big bumps.
Aye. So Stan, we continue this conversation next meeting?
Yes.
Rick asked, you asked Rick's question.
Well, I had another one. I'd like to add one, because a question and/or a statement, because I remember a couple of years ago, we were planning on, because there was a glut of buses that were all within the same year, and I thought we were getting on a track where we were going to be replacing a bus or two every year, and then we were getting caught up, and it sounds like in the last year, buses have really, like, taken a turn for the worst in general. So I would be, I also would like to know if the software can help us determine ridership as well as routing, because I drive my kid and two friends to school every day, and the line of parents that are bringing their kids to school, I don't know how many kids there really are on the bus.
Yeah, we'll be able...
Are we better off giving parents a stipend to get their kids to school than buying their own buses?
Yeah, we'll be able to, you know, take attendance on the bus, on and off, keep track of how long kids are being on the buses, you know, those are all steps towards utilizing the whole program, but right now, we're just trying to work in the routes and see how we can maximize routes.
Most of them buses are, the Athens Grafton bus in the morning has 30-something kids on it. Rich Zayas is bringing in 25 to 30 kids in the morning out there. And some of these Westminster buses, through Gatesville and stuff, there's 20-something kids on that bus every morning. But there is some routes that, they don't have as many kids. But it just, you gotta cover so much ground to do at that. If you send one bus through Westminster West, then come down and go through Pine Bank Road, then you got parents gripping because their kid's not getting picked up, and they can't get to work, and so then you gotta kind of have a route over there, too, so it's...
Deb?
I would just, I would sort of add on to what was already said by Jessa, is that in order to do capital planning, so we don't have sticker shock every time a bus breaks down, so we have, we sort of have an understanding, we should have a list of the fleet. So for capital planning, we know what we need to replace and anticipate it, instead of having to, you know, go through the pains we are at this point. So I would ask that for the next meeting, a list of the fleet should be available, so we do know what age they are, what to anticipate for problems, and so we have an idea. Because what I hear you say, we have to buy two buses at a time, and think, oh, God, you know, financially, that's not something I want to say to the taxpayers. But we need to be realistic about what we can and cannot do.
Anything else, Stan?
I just, I don't, there was, for the van to go on, the loan thing, but I guess we didn't get it on the thing to be able to vote on it.
No, we'll try to get it on December.
Well, the new bus is coming Friday.
Okay.
So maybe what we'll have to do is just, it's already been approved for the loan for the new bus, maybe we can just get the loan for the new bus, and then get approved for the loan for the van, or something, I don't know.
Work with your administration, and let us know what you need from this board. Thank you, Stan.
All righty.
Okay, WNESU Office Report, that's in the packet, unless there are any questions, I want to keep moving here. State Profiles, that's 7A2, those are also in the packet. Once again, unless there are any questions, let's move on. Business Manager, Edie.
Well, I had planned on giving you a financial, because I was going to work on entering the, all the budget and going through it last week. However, plans changed, and I'm now doing benefits and a piece of payroll. So I will get it in, I may not get it done until next week after we get payroll done, but I will get it done and give it out to you.
All right. Let me just add to that, on the financial piece, is that I'm passing around, I kind of tried to work out a schedule, because with everything going on, we usually have November to work, November, December, and January for the budgets. So if you look on that, you care, those are just proposed dates, and I'm proposing that each board get together, so we can start looking at the budget. So if you look at the SU one, the next meeting I'm proposing that we have to talk about the budget is on December 3rd. And so my plan is that, for the SU budget...
Thank you.
That, we're not, I'm not expecting, I'm not putting in any increases in the SU budget. It's staying flat, it's staying where it is, because what's, what's going to, you know, we have to look into, is one thing I want to know, is that, and we can talk about this prop, you know, I wanted to talk about it tonight, but we have to go and take a session to do that, is a contingency for negotiations, what that should look like, and also, we need to take into consideration, the other increase in the SU budget is going to be health insurance. Those are the only increases I'm looking for, for the, for the budget. If we end up moving the SU office, then there will be decreases there in the budget, but I'm not looking to add anything into the budget.
Okay.
These are good, yeah.
Thank you. Edie and Chris. Committees, I'm not aware that there's any committees.
None.
Action. Have we received anything from Westminster?
Dave?
Yes, Priscilla.
On page 10 of the, of the WNESU Office Report, I know we noted at the Rockingham meeting that the AOE section, under Andy Hollis, that's been changed, that is not a cost now, because the state rescinded that, that information, that cost, they've gone back and changed it.
Thank you, Priscilla. You can disregard on page 10 of the Central Office Report, that breaking out the costs of special ed and regular ed, that for now is not happening, so.
Thank you for pointing that out. If you have time, under Director's Comments, maybe you could explain it a little more fully. Thank you, Priscilla. So we do have a, a letter from the Town of Westminster, reattached invoice for new Union District. This is a brief note from the Westminster Select Board requesting reimbursement for the cost accrued from an additional tax bill that needed to be produced and mailed, showing an actual school tax rate that was not available at the time of the first mailing, because a budget had not been presented to the State of Vermont in a timely manner. It is the Select Board's opinion that this cost override should be the burden of the school district, not the town. Please remit payment to Town of Westminster, attention, Russell Hodgson's Town Manager at Westminster, Vermont. It's an invoice for $3,195. I have communicated with Russ about this. Deb brought this to my attention, which I appreciate. And it is not an SU matter, it is a Wyndham Northeast Union School District matter. I suggested that Russ bring it up with the appropriate board. Jack, I see your hand up, because I know you would like to come out of this, so go ahead and please make a brief.
Okay, a couple of things, I have to remember what sovereign immunity is, but I think that it says that sometimes boards, sometimes boards do things that other boards don't like, and life is like that. That'd be the first one, because if, if state or local governance issues were addressable via invoices, I've got a six-figure one for the state for the software we have. The, the second point is that Westminster isn't the only district that was inconvenienced by this, it's a real unfortunate situation. But, one, none of this would have been a problem if Act 46 hadn't been foisted on us. Two, Athens and Grafton both also incurred costs as a consequence of this, and if, and if you add up the three bills together, and then, then have the 85 percent of that bill paid by Westminster, which it would be for Westminster taxpayers, they don't really come out ahead in the calculation, as best I can see. It's certainly something we can discuss in the next board meeting when we have it, but I would be very disinclined to say anything about it, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have similar bill from Grafton, so I'm surprised that you would have a similar response.
I do, I'm most sorry, but I just think that we're asking to save taxpayers' money by asking the same taxpayers to pay it, and it doesn't really seem like that works out very well.
Is there any objection from the board that the minutes reflect the fact we've received these communications, and suggest that the Town of Westminster and the Town of Grafton take this matter up with the Union Elementary School District? Okay, all right. Presentation of Continuous Improvement Plan Goal Two.
Okay, I got my timer set for 15 minutes, so when it goes off, we're doing that, because I want to respect everybody's time. So this is part of what has been requested, going over the Continuous Improvement Plan. Last time, we went over goal number one, we're going to go over goal number two. And to help me present tonight is Jesse Hall, he's our Restorative Practices Coordinator. And so it's important, because restorative practices is directly tied into our goals. So, goal number two, Continuous Improvement, Safe and Healthy Schools. What's that mean? So we need to do a comprehensive needs assessment, and what it was based on is that we wanted to focus and establish restorative practices throughout the entire SU, because, and the information that we're going to use to help us figure out, one, what we need to do, and two, how we're making progress. And so this is the data that we were looking at, and we're going to continue to look at to continue to see how the program is doing, because, you know, that's part of the comprehensive needs assessment. So we look at the integrated field review that the state did a few years ago, and the report that they gave us, which, you know, helped us write our Continuous Improvement Plan. We also look at other data such as truancy, attendance, the homelessness, and the discipline data. All that directly ties to helping us determine the root cause analysis. So within the root cause analysis, a brief narrative describing the results of our root cause analysis, for prioritizing problems, we need to include the major factors to each problem. So looking at some of the data that we were seeing, to help us write this into the Continuous Improvement Grant, is, you know, some of these starred items here. Make trauma-informed practices a priority by implementing the restorative practice, which includes trauma informed. Because we all know that throughout the years, it's only going to continue, we're seeing more and more of it, of students coming to school with different trauma. So that's why we wrote into the SET Plan, you know, instead of seeing restorative justice, we didn't want it to be just restorative justice, it's restorative practices. And that's what, we hired Jesse as the coordinator, but you'll see later on, when he gets into what is the restorative practices program in the department, is that the different areas that are under, under that umbrella. And you'll notice it's all these services that at one point stood alone and were working in isolation, but we bring them all together to help us create a lot of this, this program that we're, that's going to be dedicated to trauma and restorative practices, by providing program oversight and responsibilities, to make sure no students are slipping through the crack, that we're working with families in school and in the community, that we're spending the time, giving training and professional development to teachers, bringing them up to speed of what it means to work with students with, who come with trauma, and then if we are working with them, and if, because a lot of times what we're seeing, these are the same students sometimes who find themselves in the principal's office with disciplinary issues over and over again. So part of the restorative practices is that this department now works with the administration to find what alternatives. Instead of suspending a kid for five or 10 days, what can we do to help them learn, talk through the problems? And so this year, you know, you'll get into, we're focused on Tier One, which is establishing relationships, building relationships, and communicating between adults and students to increase the overall environment. So what do we want to accomplish? We want to increase the success of all students by developing and utilizing a comprehensive program that assists students who have trauma, social and emotional behavior needs, homelessness throughout the Supervisory Union. We're looking at this K-12 wide, not just at the high school, not at the middle school. And what we're doing is, is unique, not just in Vermont, but in the United States in general. Usually, restorative practice, restorative justice is usually done at the upper grade levels, and so we're trying to do it from K through 12. And so that's what, you know, part of this work that we're doing is trying to bring the whole SU together, not just certain schools within the district. So like I said, we designated Mr. Hall as our F Y Coordinator. We're working with students in trauma through restorative practices, and an important part of that is, you know, using data to help us make decisions in regards to where the problems are occurring, what time of the day are the problems occurring, what are the incidences, and what are the situations that are causing these problems to happen? And so we've, this year, we're trying some, using some more data platforms to help us collect that information. It's called SWIFT, Schoolwide Information System, that allows us to really dig deep in regards to the climate and where these issues may be happening, so we can focus our areas on the, on the students and the locations and the time of the day, the day of the week that these are happening, rather than, you know, a broad stroke of the brush.
Can I have a quick definition on what McKinney-Bentho Act is?
The McKinney-Bentho Act is the homeless, is one of... The McKinney-Vento Act is the homeless, it's a bunch of things. What we talk about in here is really looking at equal opportunities for students, no matter what their disability is. And really, in our area, we talk a lot of homelessness. And so it's saying, it doesn't matter where they stand in the socioeconomic status, they all deserve the same level of education. But a lot of times, we know kids who are homeless, or experiencing trauma, or just their home lives aren't anything but typical, that it doesn't matter, we still educate them the same way, and we do everything we can for those kids there. All right, talk to me a little bit about that. So I'm going to hinge it over, and Mr. Hall and myself will continue to talk about, but I think it was important that with this, goal number two in Continuous Improvement Plan under Safe and Healthy Schools, it gives you an idea of how restorative practices ties to safe and healthy schools. And it's such a nice umbrella of how we're trying to create a whole new level of wraparound services for students at one point, where all these different departments are working by themselves in isolation. So do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Thanks for having me. Restorative practices hasn't obviously been around as long as restorative justice. Many of you probably have heard about, restorative justice has been around since like the 60s, 70s. And that's usually the reactive side, it is the reactive side to restorative practices. The practices, when they started calling it restorative practices in schools, it sounds a lot better than restorative justice, in my mind, but it also brings in the proactive measures that we take to help build community, as Mr. Grafton mentioned earlier. So, any questions about that? Difference between restorative practices, brings in the proactive part, and then restorative justice? We'll get to that more early restorative justice. Restorative practices provides a different way of philosophy, handling students who break school rules, as well as repairing some relationships that are damaged. That's more the restorative justice side, but like Mr. Grafton mentioned, right now we're focusing on the proactive, building community, building relationships side for this school. Why restorative practices? Students entering our schools affected by trauma and not ready to learn. You know, this is my first school year here, and I've been seeing, I've been involved in a lot of situations of poverty, and substance abuses is coming up, and addiction, and violence, and homelessness. We were seeing a trend that that's up with our support from the school standpoint, from the district standpoint. Curbing the many forms of disruption in educational environment. When you build relationships, because we've put on a few trainings already for all teachers and parent educators in high school, in the high school and the middle school, and the easy way of looking at it is, do you make relationships with students? As many of you already know, it's a lot easier to address discipline or misbehavior-type stuff, or stress behavior-type stuff, when you have a relationship with the students in your class. Anything else, Mr. Eric?
Like I said, we're trying to do this at a SU-wide, so there's a level of common language and understanding, because it's important if you have a student coming from the middle school to the high school, that they understand restorative practice. They know it's comfortable talking to their peers in the classroom, and they have relationships with their teachers. Because when we establish communication and trust through restorative practices, these are a lot of things that it's going to do, it's going to help us move forward. But so often, many times, that within the school day, we're not providing opportunities for students to establish those relationships with their kids. That's why we're moving towards, hopefully next year this time, that every day, no matter what grade level you're in, you're starting off with a circle and posing different questions to the students, just to get to know each other, do a check-in, engage how things are. I think we've covered most of that. You know, I think that we use that in some of the other trainings, to see it from their side, a nine and a six. It's funny, but it's also very true in regards to adult perspective, to even a kid's perspective or adult-to-adult. It all depends what you're looking at. But if you don't talk about it and have a basic understanding of where the other side's coming from, you're never going to resolve the problem.
What is the approach? It's a paradigm shift in how we approach relationships with students, behavior management It is a shift that asks us to see, creating a sense of belonging, safety and a voice. We've covered most of that, but the voice, I don't think we've covered that yet. You know, when we do some of these trainings, like circle work in classes, it gives every student the opportunity to have a voice, which in a lot of cases is hard, really hard for students with trauma and poverty backgrounds, to be able to have an opportunity to voice how they feel without being scared to do so. And in time, I mean, it doesn't happen like right away, but sometimes it takes a few circles. Students that normally wouldn't speak will speak up, and this is an important tool to help bring all students to the playing field evenly.
Yeah. Because they don't have to, when you have these circles, whatever the question is posed, it's very important that when we, that we're giving the training to the teachers, so they know how to run circles. Because if you look here, you've got to look beyond the labels, we give kids and see their essential goodness. And that's the thing, is even, you've got to be very careful, even the question that you're posing with a circle. And so if you don't have teachers trained in that, you could say to a student, okay, why don't someone share what you had for breakfast this morning? Guess what? You think it's a simple question, but there are a lot of kids out there who maybe did not come and have breakfast morning. Or, where did you go on vacation? Some kids aren't going on vacation. It's forcing us through our training to look at our own biases, so we're asking the right questions, and we're training them, and we're providing the materials to do that. But another part of that circle is that you have the talking piece you pass along, you can pass. And you're going to get just as much out of listening and seeing how much you have in common with your teacher, with your peers, that if you didn't have that circle, you were never able to have that experience of saying, you know what, I didn't think too highly of the other student in my circle, but guess what? I just knew that we have a lot of the same hobbies or interests. So it's starting to build those relationships.
So Vermont and some school districts, they've rolled it out in tier levels. They're starting to move away from tiers, because there's so many tiers and so many different initiatives in education. So now they're kind of leaning on proactive, reactive, that's why you heard me say that earlier. But this still kind of lays it out nicely, it gives you an idea, you know, we're here in the green. And the more work we do in the green, the more it pushes up, hopefully. I mean, we'll never get a completely green triangle there, but you know, it will make a difference, and hopefully the Tier Two yellow comes down, and we're measuring that with the data that we're collecting, so.
This is what makes up that first tier that we're really working on this year, is that advisory programs, morning meetings, classroom discussions, you know, small seminars, celebrations, you know, they have, you know, class circles at the elementary level. It's all about, this first year that we're rolling this out, it's all about communication and building relationships amongst everyone in your building, adult to adult, adult to student, parents, everyone. It's bringing them all, bringing them all in to really focus on this first.
I can give you a quick example, it just happened in the last couple of days, because I've been doing some mediation work in the high school. So I was proactive with a couple of students, we got them at the same table, got each of their stories separately, and then I brought them together voluntarily. If they were up for it, they were up for it. And that might have kept them from getting into a bear altercation down the road, so it makes a difference.
They were able to have that, they were able to, instead of saying, you know what, you're suspended, you're suspended, see you later. We're able to bring them together and talk about the issue, and say, where did this go wrong? What do you need from this person to make things better? You know, how did it make you feel? Who do you think impacted? And a lot of times, you say, well, just the two of us. No. Look who's in the room, the two of you, your parents, the administrators, anyone who witnessed it. So it brings to light the kind of magnitude of what their actions could have impacted, and really teaching them how to resolve conflict without, you know, getting themselves in trouble and knowing who to seek out. And the more relationships you build, the more people they have to seek out and share those opportunities. And these are just, you know, the same areas in the Tier One green that we just looked at. And we're just going to brush over this real quick, because Tier Two is what we'll be working on, you know, end of this year and next year, but we just want to give you a quick overview of what that is. So it's a response to conflict and harm.
That's what I, the example I just used is a perfect example. There was harm, someone felt some harm from another student, and I brought them together. And like at six and nine, they both didn't understand each other very well, they started seeing each other's side, how they were feeling, they had obviously a lot of misperceptions of what was going on, and we stopped a lot of drama in that simple example.
And so, like I said, a lot of it, we're not going to watch the video, but this is pretty much the key principles. And it's a good video, it's a five-minute video, but this guy gives us an example of he, this is a teacher who helps these students figure out a problem they're having with each other, and they've moved on, instead of it boiling to a point where the whole classroom gets disrupted. Yeah, and that's why I say it's a way, it's so important and stuff. And I'll post this on our website, on my blog, so you can watch some of this stuff. But that's what's so important about this, is that teachers can't have these conversations with their students if they don't have a relationship. You know, and as you go up in grades, you kind of, as the kids get older, you tend to lose that relationship, that little nurturing piece, so you don't have those conversations. We're trying to keep that intact throughout all the grade levels.
So these are the key questions that we ask to repair harm. And like I said, it's a voluntary process, we don't force anyone to have to meet face-to-face with someone if they don't want to. But a lot of times, they do, and it's working. This is like, Tier Three is like, you know, there's big suspensions, you know, it might even, it might even involve the board, you know, ruling on some kind of suspension level, where, you know, it's like the intense level of discipline. And there needs to be a lot more planning to work, which I think the next slide kind of talks about. You've got to have reentry meetings, if someone's out for 10 days, we want to make sure, you know, they're not just walking in the front door and like nothing happened, we want to make sure we circle back and make sure they're ready to be back in school. And then hopefully we find, and I don't think it's hard, we find people that want to support students that are coming back under those circumstances, those are examples of people that can help. And then we have multiple check-ins and check-outs, because just because you have one meeting in the beginning, a lot of these students need continued extra support. We also have a strong relationship with Community Justice Center for big, you know, intensive level-type situations, where if a third party is needed, the Community Justice Center have a good partnership with them in town, and we can work with them if, you know, we get to that point.
Okay. So we've got about two minutes left, and I know there's positives today. And I'm hoping down the road that we'll continue to update you guys as we go through the different stages of restorative practices. But I think it's important to just to know, this is what makes up the new restorative program. And Jesse can talk a little bit about it. But at one point, most of these circles here, they were all working by themselves in isolation. We just brought all these student support services together into one department, and this is what it looks like, and you can talk just a little bit, Jesse, about.
Well, the restorative practices, I mean, there are school districts doing it in Vermont, like I said earlier, but what may be new to Vermont, I haven't seen this kind of model, but all these positions, the prevention and home-to-school liaisons and the homeless liaison, they all have a restorative aspect to their position. And when we're working as a team, they feel like, I've already received a lot of comments about how they felt isolated, working by themselves in the district, now they're together, and they feel like, you know, they're part of a team. And we also can coordinate services in a more productive way, where we're not doubling up in places that we don't need to double up, and it saves time and it's best for students.
Chris, I presume that was Michael Harrington?
No, Michelle.
That's Michelle.
Michelle Harrington.
Yep. And so these are just, you know, what, you know, some of the stuff that the team does. I got 17 seconds left, we have 17 seconds left. But, you know, this, you know, so this just gives you an idea of why we wrote it into the SIP under Safe and Healthy Schools, because you can see the impact that it's going to have as we continue to grow. We're using a lot of grant monies to get us going in this. And so, you know, I look forward to, you know, future presentations and...
Is that your timer or your phone?
It's my alarm.
It's your alarm.
I didn't use it that much, so I didn't know how to shut it off.
Helping for the board, if you could take a few questions before we keep moving here. Are there questions from the board? Jeff?
This is, McKinney-Vento is a homeless assistance act, is reimbursed through the fence, is that how it works?
No, it's not.
It does say there's $5 million per year funding.
We have a McKinney-Vento grant for $5,000 this year, and we use it for transportation, death above and beyond, catastrophic transportation. Otherwise, we transport homeless students at a cost to our own SU budget, and we get clothing.
Do we apply every year for that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it does reapply. I mean, the consolidated federal fund grants that funds a lot of the restorative practices program, you know, we get that money every year, and we have to, you know, piece it out, how we're doing it and stuff. But, yeah, just find a way to make it work. And hopefully for next year, we're going to have a lot of data, like I talked about, so we can really dig deep into it. But the impact that we're already seeing, that, is that, we just wanted to originally start off working, training teachers and how to do circles with the classroom. And we'll know when to move on to the next level based on the need that people are asking us. Like, we never thought that this year that we'd already be working with students, Mr. Hall, we'd be working with students in the administration at the middle school and high school, to resolve issues, to get the students back together and talking, so we can send them back out there, and then span them back in checking. So we're moving ahead, it's just, you know, because the need is there, and it's been very, we've got great feedback from teachers, and it's been very welcoming, and people want more and more of it, but we have to, you know, keep pumping the brakes, because we can't get ahead of ourselves. I mean, you know, this is a very delicate process when you're dealing with a lot of different difficult situations that could occur, and it's all about establishing relationships and communicating, so.
Any other questions for Chris? Jack?
Just a request.
Or Jesse?
I'm sorry. Just a request. Again, I know that schools are increasingly doing social service work that nobody else would do, and that's unfortunate, but it's reality. With that said, I also have a great allergy to extended process discussions, because I think that what I would like to see is, in future presentations, talk to us about those impacts, because I think that's the part that we really, you know, how you do it, God bless you. What it does at the end of the day is what we probably wanted here.
Yeah, but right now, with the new program, we don't have the data to show you.
I'm anticipating usually when we'll be able to do that.
So using the, you know, looking at attendance data that we have, using the school-wide information system, that's where we're excited to come back and tell you, okay, these are the incidents, this is how many cases we saw, this is, you know, that's all the data that we're hoping to, down the road, present to the boards on a regular basis, make it part of a report, that Jesse and his team can roll out, so you can see the progress that we're making, you can see the areas that we're focusing in on. But I think, you know, as being part, as goal number two on the SIP, and boards are assisting writing the SIPs, it was important to make that part of, you know, goal number two. And so that's your goal number two for your Continuous Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you. Thanks for having me, Jesse.
So you're just working with youth services at all?
Yes.
The team, pretty good?
Yes. We're working with the Great Falls.
Community Justice Center.
Community Justice Center.
Parks Place, the other agencies in the Parks Place.
Great Falls.
Great Falls Connections.
Youth Services did connect with me, so we are, and as a grant writer, I just am involved, because the state dictates... involved, because the state dictates that we do something in Safe and Healthy Schools, and we have grown our endeavors around restorative practices, and the state has really approved of them, but we do our youth services.
Thanks, yeah, have a good night.
Okay, other old business for discussion and action, busing committee update, is there an update?
No, we need to elect members to the transportation committee.
Okay, those members, Chris, unless there's an objection from the board, I think it'd be best to check with your local boards, because we're...
Appoint members, is that what I did?
Yes. Is anybody object to that approach? Okay, can we do that, Chris?
That's fine.
Status of Ed Finance Software.
Well...
We're making progress, and we're getting a lot more support.
That's a, that's a good report. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you for that, Ede. Building lease for central office, any updates on that, Chris?
Nope, just keep going back and forth, I'm trying to nail down some of the language. So a couple more, you know, follow-ups I'm, I'm working on. I got the latest one today, reviewed it, got some wording I need to head back on that. I did get, you know, it written up as a 10-year lease, and what that looks like is, you know, 3% hike over the years, which is typical, I guess, so that was one of the things that the board requested, we look at what, what that is. So I'm hoping that within the next week, I can get the language nailed down to what we want to see for, you know, it's literally just a few words, but it's something we need to get nailed down before moving forward.
Chris, Chris has kept me updated on this, and it's been quite a bit of work that's been done. So I anticipate that by the next time we meet, we will probably have a definitive document for your consideration. Yes, Priscilla?
I still got extreme concern over the parking. I emailed Dave, I had checked the bank parking lot, and the day, one Monday that I checked it, there was not one single parking space.
Right.
And then another day, there was four parking spaces, so it is a big concern as to the parking situation there. And, and I would also urge continuation, continuation of looking for alternatives, such as possibly, and maybe you've considered this, but the high school, as far as putting a area, as far as putting a temporary building there, because there would be lots of parking, there's plenty of space that you could come up with that, with the amount of land that's there.
What I would like to say, Priscilla, is that the matter of parking has received recent consideration, and I would anticipate that we would have some definitive answers on that by the next time we meet.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why, because it came up last conversation, that not ready to say, "Here's the lease, let's talk about it," because parking is one of those areas that we have to get nailed down.
Because as of November 1st, the parking's limited, so you're not allowed to do a lot of things that you can do the rest of the year until summertime.
Yeah, because, you know, even with wintertime, parking's limited too, so, I mean, that's one of the reasons why I'm not prepared to propose the lease to the board, because of parking and some other language that's not related to parking, but it's still, if it's a question for myself, and when David looked at it, it's going to be a question for all of you, so I don't want to waste every board meeting giving you a lease, having it come back. So hopefully next time, maybe, maybe not, but, you know, but yes, parking is definitely one of those things that we're trying to take a closer look at and get it specific in the lease.
Thank you for looking at the overall picture.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing it up. Okay, do we have any appointments?
No, we do not.
We've been through our executive session, director's comments. Would you like to start us off, Deb?
Sure, I have one. I'm part of the steering committee for the Let's Take Action Rockingham Community Visit, which is going to be December 4th, coming up pretty soon, and this is being presented by the, by the Vermont Council on Rural Development. It's a major opportunity for the community, I think they came here maybe 10, 20 years ago, I can't remember, but it's where we engage as many people as possible on a number of topics. There will be, on that day, from 2:30 until 8:30, there will be nine different sessions at three different locations, each an hour and a half, on items like tourism, education, from early education to workforce development, if they're of interest to us, housing, economic rate of utilization, and so on. They'll be hour and a half, we're going to ask as many people as possible to come to these different sessions, and there'll be posters, I'll be getting a bunch of them tomorrow, there's already information I can send off to Chris, that he can forward to the members of the boards. And there'll be a community dinner, I'm working with Deb Wickes from Great Falls Connections, we're going to be holding it at the Moose at 6 o'clock, from 6 to 7, a big spaghetti dinner, so people get fed, and you can go to any and all of the sessions that you can make, and I will make sure that everybody has a chance. That's a great opportunity for us to bring, they will also be bringing leaders who have access to funds. So funding for education projects, funding for building a central square in the village, you know, housing, other things like that. So they, they will bring with them many people that they can, that can bring the money to bear, and we will be getting community conversation going on and trying to build a vision for different projects that'll melt down into, and finally, when they're all done with this on Slater, down to three or four different projects that we can actually get funded and accomplish.
And that's on December 4th, correct?
December 4th is the date, and that's a Wednesday? Yes, Wednesday, December 4th.
Starting again there?
Wednesday, December 4th is the Let's Take Action Rockingham Community Visit, and I'll get, make sure the posters get to Chris.
And one more time, the place again?
Well, it's being done at, sessions done at the American Legion, the Rockingham Library, and the Moose Family Center.
Thank you.
And there'll be food, so people will get fed.
Jeff?
Justin, no, sorry, Justin's not here. I'm going to be in New York next week, and Cheryl Charles is going to be gone, and I'm not entirely sure if Charles is also going to be gone, so we may have to reschedule our upcoming Westminster Graffton Athens Board meeting, try to get a note out to everybody, and try to figure out an alternate date ASAP, because we've got a lot of work on both budget and on, on governance that we need to get to, and I'm sorry for the inconvenience, there's not much I can do about this business thing that I have to attend to.
Brenda? Priscilla?
Yes, you asked me to speak about the Agency of Education, they have rescinded their proposal or their requirement.
This is Act 1173 related, is that correct?
Right, and that, the requirement was that we had to break out eligible and ineligible costs for special education, looking at what's regular ed and what's not regular ed when they go to independent schools and out-of-district placements, and the state, as of right now, has rescinded that, and so that, that cost for right now is on hold. There's not proof that they won't come back and put that back in, but right now, it's been taken away, so that's a plus for our district. The other thing is that, as of Monday, the, they've closed their discussions, trying to come up with a compromise between the two health systems, between employers and the employees in school districts, and so now it's at the arbitration level, and the arbitrator will decide on the two programs. And I can't give you the website to go and look at that, I did look at the two comparisons.
That's at the end of the month, correct? They're supposed to make that decision?
It was originally December 15th, but I don't know what the date is at this point, because they just barely, this Monday, finished with it, and usually the arbitrator gets at least a month.
Yeah, you're right.
And then he has to write his report, and then it gets back, and, you know. There was an indication that it would probably, some indication that it might start July 1st.
I want to ask you for clarification, it is binding arbitration, and the arbitrator will choose either the board's proposal...
One complete system, yeah, one proposal.
Or the association's proposal, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
And it will not be a hybrid?
No, it could be anything agreed upon prior to, if they could have come to some compromises and that kind of stuff, and come up with a settled one, but they did not do that, so now it's binding, it's either the school boards or the Vermont NEAs, just whichever one they come up with. Those are the two, right? It should be those.
Thank you, Priscilla, that's timely and important information for this board and all boards in the state.
Yeah, because budget's coming up.
Anything else, Priscilla?
No, that was it. Thank you for all the information tonight.
Rick?
Thanks for allowing me to stay.
Charles? Lynn? Brooks?
I'd like to give Ede kudos for the handling of the personnel issue we were discussing earlier, because she did take it upon herself to personally deal with some things that I think were maybe above and beyond her role, and I think that she took on a very hard task and handled it well, and I think that we owe her some appreciation for that. So I want to thank her for that.
What's the need?
And I would like to thank this board for its hard work and patience tonight. Okay, date of her, actually, agenda items for next meeting, are there any immediate agenda items?
Bus list.
I think we have that.
Got it.
Okay, any others?
Did, so were you going to provide financials in December, that meeting?
I hope to get them out to you next week. That's my plan, as soon as we get through April.
Do we have a budget committee for the SU setup at this point, or any budget meeting set up for the SU at this point?
I'm proposing the ones that are on there. December 3rd, be the next one.
Okay. And are we doing it similar to what we have in the past, where it's, where the entire board is coming invited, or do we have a specific budget committee this year?
Question for David.
Your question, sir?
The question was...
Do we have a specific budget committee?
I cannot definitively answer your question without consulting the committee's list.
I think I'm on it.
Chris, can we get a response for Rick's question?
Well, I mean, last year, I think it was the, my first year with all of you, was just, the whole SU board was around the table.
Well, we, we had a...
Everyone's always been welcome.
We did have budget meetings, yeah.
Yeah, usually we have like a chair that handles that, and, and the rest of the board is invited, with at least a couple folks designated, so that we don't have quorum issues, because otherwise, it's everybody, and we have, right, and oddly enough, not everybody is as thrilled about, about this process as you might think.
We will attempt to update the SU board on the status of the budget committee before the end of the week.
Yeah, I'd like to know if I was on it before.
I have one question on this, because the date for the first one is given as the 4th of 4th, and that is that the night of the big other meeting about improvement in the, so whether that wants to be considered as far as maybe...
Yes, so I can, I can tell you definitively, I won't be here for the 4th meeting, December 4th, because I have, I'm going to be spending all day doing that.
Those inputs have been duly noted.
Yes, thank you, Priscilla, for letting me do that.
Okay, date of next meeting is December, and...
By board, right.
It is.
So we'll see if we can find an alternate date, let the boards know.
Okay, hearing no other business to come before this board, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Enthusiastically moved.
Okay, Brian has that motion, and do I have a second? Charles, enthusiastically second call in favor.
Enthusiastically, aye.